Yeah, we're broadcasting.
Okay.
All right.
All right. So, good afternoon, everyone. We have five out of six of our board members present. I know our last one is trying to access us, but I will call the Wilton Board of Education's special meeting to order on Tuesday, August 25th. So again, welcome to all the staff who are here. Thank you and board members. I know this is a special meeting out of sequence. And also thank you to all the people who are listening. Our first order is to review and approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Gretchen, I'm going to take you. Mandy, I'm going to take your second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, at this point, it is time for public comment. I'm going to give my usual speech about public comment, which is the board reads all public comments. We do not interact at the board meeting itself. We provide follow-up, follow-up if it's appropriate. And we'll make an addendum, an additional comment tonight, that we received probably six or seven letters concerning and referring to a specific group of students and concerns about certain behavior. I consider it personally identifiable information. And so as a school board, we do not read public comment that might be considered a confidential student record. So I understand parents' concerns. I will say all the letters were polite, but I don't want to risk putting personally identifiable student information out there. So we will not read those, although all the board members will have seen it. Lucille, are there additional Board of Ed public comments?
Yes, there are. I have, yes, I have some right now. So the first one, Sarah Cummings, Cummings, good afternoon. Thank you for taking my question. All three of my kids participated in WH freshman orientation last week, two as link leaders and one as a student. The technology was very challenging and it seemed that about half the freshmen could not enter. I have older kids, but I know for first time WH families, they are feeling very stressed. How can, I think it means we, test technology to ensure it works and help to support good technology as it is so critical to the kid's success? The next comment is from Laura Feick. This summer, Dr. Smith and the Wilton Board of Education called upon the teachers to return to school in order to teach the children of Wilton. Those of us that could choose to return with the understanding that are liable to be protected by communal adherence to strict health protocols. I am keeping up my end of the bargain and I am in the midst of preparing to teach in a hybrid format. My fear is that the Wilton community is not and will not uphold their end of the bargain by following these protocols at the risk of my health. I asked Dr. Smith and the Wilton Board of Education to prioritize the health and safety of all students and staff when making decisions about the reopening plan and the start and start the year in the distance learning format. Thank you. The next comment is from Paula Kazaragi. Will the town of Wilton and Wilton schools proactively take all measures possible to keep students and their teachers safe by requiring a negative COVID test before starting school and regular testing and contact tracing thereafter? Many public and private colleges are doing it. Why can't we? Thank you, Paula Kazaragi. The next comment is from Christine Bragg. Dear BOE, please consider pushing the start date of school to 9/8 so there is more time to prepare from a technology and health standpoint. Most of the other surrounding towns are starting after Labor Day now with the hybrid model. So there is enough prep time and since governor, the governor has loosened the guidelines of the, on the number of days in school required for the 2020, 2021 school year due to the pandemic. Thank you for your consideration, Christine Bragg. The next one is from Kimberly England. Dear Board of Education members, our son is a rising sixth grader at Miller Driscoll. I am an elementary school educator and my husband is a professor. We have appreciated how Dr. Smith and the Board of Education have embraced a flexible reopening plan that allows for each school to determine which model, fully, fully remote, hybrid, or in-person, and procedures that serve the needs of their specific students. Because of this decision upon the opening, Miller Driscoll is able to implement a hybrid model with the youngest students that is developmentally appropriate and prioritizes FaceTime for students with both their teachers and their peers. It is our hope that this will soon transition to fully in-person learning. In-person contact is vitally important, particularly, particularly for our youngest learners, learners. We are impressed by the care taken to ensure that Wilton's kindergarten through second graders will be supported socially and emotionally by the current hybrid model. Young students need to have in-person academic support to learn the basics of reading, writing, and math. They need safe and socially distance, social opportunities with their peers and opportunities to practice problem solving and other skills. They need the chance to form strong relationships in person with teachers who will act as their guides. Again, we would prefer to move to fully in-person learning as soon as conditions and confidence warrant. We strongly urge you to take advantage of the flexibility you have put in place to allow schools to choose different models based on their needs and circumstances. Actions at one school that are contrary to town's safety mandates should not dictate the educational model for other schools. For example, the behavior of some high school students should not jeopardize a chance for more normal return to school for elementary school students. The fully remote model under the current conditions, low transmission rates, the understanding that younger children are less likely to be seriously sickened, is inappropriate for Miller Driscoll students at this time. The education of our youngest, most vulnerable students should not be sacrificed. Miller Driscoll should reopen using the hybrid model and then return to full in-person instruction as soon as is viable to do so. Thank you, Kimberly and Mike England.
Okay. Lucille was, we have public comment also at the end, depending on how time allows. I do need to say to everyone, and I see there's quite a many people watching, that we have a hard stop tonight of a ramp between 6:00 and 6:15. Over half our board members, our parents as well, and there is some online training for them. So we're going to do our best tonight to focus on a few items. We have another meeting scheduled for Thursday, and whatever business we do not finish tonight, we will take up on Thursday. All right, that said, we're going to jump right into, and I do have just one sort of businessy thing. Lucille, if I could ask you to see if you could help Glenn Hemmerly get online or get, you know, into the panel, that would be wonderful.
Sure.
In the meantime, we'll, we'll proceed.
Okay.
Tonight, I do want to preface something by, by the meeting, by saying that while this is a special meeting, it was not scheduled. We, as a board and as a community, were hearing teacher voices, parent voices concerning about our readiness to start school. We also heard reports not of, of behavior that wasn't particularly in line with our protocols for social distancing or wearing masks. But we, as a board, are not limiting that to any one event, or one group of students, or one date, or one time. There have been multiple concerns voiced about behavior of groups of students in public, and unfortunately, not making perhaps the wisest or most mature of decisions. But we've also heard from teacher voices about a variety of issues. And so Dr. Smith and his staff and the administration has been listening, taking it all in. And the key word about all of this, for all districts, not only Wilton, is flexibility and adaptability. Those were sort of into our goals as well, that we would do regular review and that we would listen to all voices and that we would be guided by health and safety concerns. So with that, Dr. Smith, and knowing we have a fairly tight timeline, we want to give you the opportunity to review the different arenas that you've been considering and tell us if you have any recommendations. And as a board, we will ask questions, and then as a board, we'll make individual comments, and we'll see how far we get. All right. So thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think too, just to let everybody know, I do have a recommendation, and it's a, it's a change, it's a proposal to change the way that we were originally planning to start the school year. And that is why we're here together tonight. So before I give you that recommendation, I think it's important to just step back for a second. I see my role as shepherding our administrative team, our teachers, our families, toward the common goal of providing and participating in a public education experience that is, number one, safe for all stakeholders, and, number two, of very high quality. Okay? That's been the mission from day one, and that mission hasn't changed. What has changed is the fact that we're in the midst of a global pandemic, and there is no playbook for responding to these conditions that are on the ground today. And so we have been, for months, planning and conjecturing, organizing, adapting, responding, taking in feedback from everybody. But this is an enormously complex task, and it's not just here in Wilton, it's any public school system in any sector of the globe trying to open this up. It's particularly complex here for us because we don't have a playbook, it's brand new. So as Debbie was just describing, our stock in trade right now is flexibility, and we have to be flexible to all of our families who are watching and listening to our staff who are watching and listening tonight. You know how hard this is, but we are operating under the same mission, and that is to get us back to school as safely and as effectively as possible. Okay? So that's, just to set the stage, that's where we're coming from. And it, this is a shared, shared obligation. On the health and safety front, we all have an obligation to participate in the mitigation strategies that are being preferred by the CDC, by the State Department of Health, by the local Department of Health. That is a community responsibility. Whether you're an adult or a student, you must, in order to ensure that we're going to be able to operate in school effectively and safely, that's everybody, and nobody gets a timeout from that. And I don't know how to say this any differently to anyone who is listening. It is a shared obligation. We all must, it's our civic and moral duty. If we don't, then we don't get to have the kind of in-person schooling that we're hoping for. Okay? I think beyond that, this community is capable of it. We can do it. And many, many people, and I want to thank those who I know every day are making sacrifices and making difficult choices in the midst of a pandemic, but we're all in the midst of a pandemic. And so we have to respond accordingly for our own benefit and safety, but also for the benefit and safety of those with whom we live in this community. Very important for everybody. And I understand, I've heard, I've got lots of emails, and I've heard lots of stories about, you know, who's lost what. But I'm also tracking the death toll in this country and across the globe as a result of this pandemic, and we all should. It's sobering. Okay, so now, in the last week, as teachers have returned, and the rubber is hitting the road in terms of our preparation, because there is no playbook, we're taking our best laid plans, and we're seeing that we have to adapt and adjust. Okay? And so some of the issues that we're encountering are simply lack of experience, because this is a brand new model for us. We're trying to put together a hybrid classroom where we're effectively engaging and educating kids who are in front of us, and also effectively engage in kids who are remote. That has not been done here effectively by anybody that I'm aware of. There is no playbook. And so as we're working through the technology, working through the software, software platforms, we're just, we're encountering all kinds of, I think, logical and natural issues, and they're all, we can overcome all of them. And so part of my recommendation is in response to a recognition that we can do this, but we have to build in a little bit extra time for preparation and practice. Okay? So recognize that despite what we want, these challenges are real, and we have to bring everybody along in order to deliver on the promise of providing an effective education. I'm going to come back to that. So to, to set the stage, kind of here's where we are. You know, as we talked about what model that we're, we're going to operate in, we said we're looking at really two sets of factors. The first factor was the community and the county transmission rate. Per the Department of Public Health, Fairfield County is still in that low range. So it looks like we have 3.3 per 100,000 cases on a rolling seven-day average. The percent test positivity over seven days is 1.4%. That's all of Fairfield County. Per the DPH, that's low. Lynn reported last night, and hopefully people are tracking those numbers. The trend in Wilton right now is worrisome, because we're not staying flat and we're not trending down, we're actually trending up. And so over the last six days, Wilton's had five new cases. And Lynn reported that the six-day average was double the 31-day average. Okay? So that's a trend in the wrong direction, and that's a worrisome trend, especially kind of in light of knowing that we're going to open schools and we're going to want to bring people back together. In working with the town health director and making sure our plans are good and solid, and we're addressing all of the health and safety concerns, we did speak about some recent concerns about students engaging in activities and families and other community members engaging in activities that were really not in keeping with the health and safety parameters. And so we spoke about that, we spoke about that in light of our mitigation strategies. And there is, while we haven't seen any hard data to suggest that any of the very recent events have led to or are going to lead to an outbreak, there is a concern about that happening. And so I would just say, there's no data, but there is, there is a concern as there would be, you know, anytime, you know, lots of people got together and weren't wearing masks. So in that conversation, our town health director is favoring that we start the school year, we either delay it a week, or we start the school year in remote learning for everybody for a week. Okay? And I'll, I'll talk you through that. But just know that, you know, that's a big factor kind of in, in the recommendation that I'm going to make to you tonight. Understanding where the community is, and we know that we have a continuum of perspectives about COVID-19 and what's, what we can and should do. I would say, over the last 48 hours or so, I've gotten lots and lots of questions expressing concern and worry about bringing large groups of kids and teachers back into a school building in light of some of these, some of these worrisome trends. In terms of our planning and preparation for the health and safety of staff and students, as you know, and I've reported, you know, we've put in a number of mitigation strategies. And so just to give you the facts, all of our, the PPE that we ordered was delivered last week to our schools. Teachers have been picking up their individual classroom supplies over, I think, the first part of this week, maybe the last week too. So classroom teachers have disinfectant wipes, they each have a face shield, they were issued a cloth face covering. We've also provided a supply of disposable masks. We ordered, as I reported to you, we ordered these six-foot rolling plexiglass barriers that are movable in a classroom. We're not going to have those for the start of school. There are pipeline issues that are, you know, too detailed to get into, but it looks like they're not even due to ship until the 9th of September. We did buy, and our maintenance staff also made these smaller sneeze guards. And so we have two styles. The style that we purchased are trifold, and they're trans, translucent, and they sit on a student's desk. And the supply that our maintenance staff made are single plexiglass barriers, about 30 inches high. So we have distributed those to the classrooms. We do not have one for every single student workstation in every single classroom. So we've prioritized the dispersment by taking those sneeze guard shields and putting them on every desk in the front row. And then we'll go back and we'll add additional sneeze guards to classrooms as our supplies permit. We installed hand sanitizer dispensers in all of our classrooms. We also ordered an additional 300 so we could have a supply in hand if they break, or if there are other workspaces that need hand sanitizer dispensers. We ordered freestanding hand sanitizer dispensers that will be in place outside of all of the entryways of our schools. Those are due to arrive this week. In terms of just some other material that we felt like we needed for our classroom and for our teachers to be effective, we ordered rolling carts for some teachers to use to port their materials, because particularly in the lower schools, teachers will be moving from classroom to classroom. Those are due to arrive this week. We needed to order desks for the kindergarten classrooms. Those are scheduled to arrive in the district on September 2nd. As part of our technology upgrades to enable the hybrid and the remote classroom, we went, our IT staff went around and assessed the equipment, tested sound fields. There were a number of classrooms that didn't have sound field apparatus in them. So we ordered them. Those sound fields arrived today, and our IT staff is in the process of installing them. A number of our teachers also requested document cameras, which is separate and apart from the webcam that we're using. Pipeline issue there too, those are due to us mid-September. So we have a lot of the supplies in place, but you know, some of the other supplies are still
Yeah.
in process. So now, the other big question that's come up is in terms of our readiness, our staff readiness with the technology tools and the technology training. And so our staff had engaged in training, both learning Schoology and that learning management system that, you know, we intend to use across our classrooms. They've also been working very diligently in trying to set up and understand how this hybrid classroom is going to work. This is an extraordinarily heavy lift. We're asking our teachers to learn a lot of new. And as much time as they've, we've allotted them, you have to remember.
Kevin, I have to just interrupt for one second.
Go ahead.
Glenn, Glenn, yeah, I just wanted you to go on mute. Thank you. And everybody, it's a little bit better if you can be on mute. So thank you. Sorry for the interruption. Glenn, I'm glad you're
Yeah. And I'm sorry for the soliloquy here. I just, I want to try to paint as detailed a picture as I can in the time we have, so you understand the basis for my recommendation. So I think it's, it's important to name the complexity and the challenge that we placed in front of our teachers. I've walked around, yesterday I spent quite a bit of time at the high school, and I had the opportunity to speak with quite a number of our teachers. And this morning, I had an hour with a number of teachers at Middlebrook, and I've had, you know, separate exchanges with teachers from all over the district. And the, the theme is the same, just about everywhere. The teachers are stating, you know, first, they're nervous about being in person, you know, with kids in this COVID environment. So there's a sense of fragility there. Second, they are naming the heavy lift that it is to learn all of these new technologies in order to successfully deliver curriculum. Third, they are committed to doing it and doing it well. I've heard lots and lots of teachers say, this is really hard, we're going to get it done, and we're going to do our best, and we're going to try. And so the commitment to that work is really important for me to state, because for all of us, right, we are trying to set up our system so that we can deliver on our commitment to, to deliver the best education possible. Our staff is absolutely committed to that. But they also are upfront about just how difficult this is, and I want everyone to be clear that, again, we're in a pandemic, we're asking them to do lots of new things for very, very good reasons, but it's exceptionally challenging. And so they're saying, whatever time you can give us, whatever time you can give us. So across the district, people this week were really, really appreciative of having the extra time as a result of changing the, the orientation sessions. And I know that was a burden for families and a change, and it came at the last, last minute. But I also want everybody to understand that for our staff, that time has been well invested. And so, you know, while there is certainly a, a loss for our students, it was a real benefit, it is a real benefit for our staff in terms of the time that they're able to now dedicate to just continuing to get themselves ready. So my recommendation. I looked at several different scenarios. The first was, we just continue based on all the information I got, right? So all the information from the communities, the concerns that came in about some of our community members' behavior, all of the information about, you know, where our staff is and what they're contending with. And I kind of framed it out in three, three different possible scenarios. The first scenario I imagined was a do-nothing scenario. We just stick to our guns and, you know, we kind of forge ahead in the plan that we had originally proposed and you approved. The second scenario was, we just closed school for a week, just shut down, have the teachers go to this Friday, and then just push out the opening day to Tuesday after Labor Day, and we just extend the end of the year, five more days to, to June 17. The third option that I worked through was that rather than open in a hybrid district-wide for the first week, that we open fully remotely for one week, and then we transition district-wide to the hybrid on that Tuesday after Labor Day. And so my recommendation to you tonight is that you make a motion to approve my recommendation that we open the week, open the school year, excuse me, for one week in a full, remote operation. And I think, while there are some obvious drawbacks, and I'll talk you through kind of the benefits and the drawbacks as I see them, and I'm not, they're not exhaustive in my mind, it's, they're illustrative to make the case. But I think if our goal is to deliver a high-quality education, to get our kids in school at some point, and hopefully be able to work ourselves to a place where we can bring all of our kids back, you know, at, at least at the elementary and middle school level, if not the high school too, then we need to do some further training and support. We also need to provide some additional time and support to our teachers as they continue to work through these questions and issues around setting up their classrooms. So that's my recommendation. Here, here are the drawbacks as I see them. Number one, and obviously, it's a change in the plan. And so for at least our parents, and I imagine probably for our staff too, people have already started to make different arrangements based on the plan that we had approved. And so now, for this next week, we're going to have to pivot, and those people are going to have to make a change. It may be childcare change, it may be they have to adjust their work hours again, it may be something else. But I think everyone's going to have to deal with the, if we, if you vote to approve this, everyone's going to have to deal with the fact that it's yet, yet another change. And the best I can say in, in response to that is, we're in a, we're in a pandemic, and we're putting together an education plan that hadn't previously existed. And so we're learning as we go here. But I also think a lot of people who were even kind of initially dissatisfied with the hybrid, a lot of people are going to be dissatisfied and angry about going fully remotely, because there is a strong expectation that kids should be in school, and given the, you know, the transmission rates across the county, kids ought to be in school. So I understand that. I see that. as one of the drawbacks. Another drawback is the perception that many people have developed about what remote learning is based on their experience in the spring. And I'll just take a moment to repeat. And I know we've said it a lot in these, these board meetings. Remote learning is going to look drastically different than it did in the spring. As I've described it, what we were doing in the spring, I would consider emergency e-learning. And we didn't have expectations in place for students. We didn't have grades. We weren't sure kind of what the experience was of families and their own kind of immediate response to the pandemic. I think as we moved through the springtime, we did tighten up and we got better in many, many places. But my general takeaway, based on the feedback we got from all the families, was that on the whole, it was a very uneven experience. And the one thing over everything else that parents and students were asking for was more contact time and more synchronous learning time with their teachers. And so I'm saying to the board and to the many people who are listening, remote learning will involve a very heavy dose of synchronous learning. That is the expectation. I think our teachers widely understand that and, you know, they're, you know, craving contact with their kids too. So I don't see that as being an issue for this, certainly not for this first week. But I understand that, you know, we have a perception of, of what remote learning is based on the spring. And so I think that's a drawback. You know, it's another change. And so, you know, every time we make a change, I think we run the risk of undermining the, the confidence of people in our plan. And I certainly appreciate that. And I would just ask that people understand the enormity and the complexity of the task before us, but it is a change. There's no question about it or it could be a change. And then another drawback is those two days that we would have had each cohort in next week, we're letting that go now and we're having them all, all remote. And so that is, I do see that as a, as a drawback. In terms of the benefits of moving in this direction, I think at least partially, we address some of the health and safety concerns that have emerged this week about students, maybe others potentially coming into the school building carrying COVID. So, you know, kids are obviously not in school this week. If we're remote next week, you know, that if we're kind of benching off last Sunday, the 14th day will be next Sunday. So by the time we bring our kids back in a hybrid, you know, we're beyond that period. When I spoke to Barry Bogle earlier today, you know, he was looking at that calendar and thought, you know, that's, you know, probably a smart move. I think if something is going to, you know, pop in the community, you know, COVID related here in the next couple of days, if we make this move, you know, at least kids will already be out of school. So we don't have to adjust in the short term. I think that's a, that's a partial response to addressing the health and safety concerns. I think the second benefit related to that is next week, as our teachers are working with all of their students, they're, they're not going to be jumping right into their academic content. Much of the time, at least in the first part of the week, is going to be spent on all of those very normal, very natural introduction and orientation activities. So all of the, you know, kind of group rapport development that teachers do every single year in terms of creating community and a community of learners, that's going to happen and that'll happen synchronously and very much the way that we're having this meeting right now. Additionally, our teachers and administrators will be able to do the orientation both for, you know, what remote learning is going to look like as well as orient students, at least, you know, verbally. And what the expectations are going to be when they come back to school. And so it won't be a cold orientation where they're getting off the bus and then being directed here, there. They'll have time with their teachers to talk through and begin to think about all of those logistical concerns. I see that as a significant benefit in starting the year remotely for one week. So I started at the very beginning of my long soliloquy here. That teachers have been working really, really hard and they're, you know, they've got lots of challenges in front of them. But, you know, I keep hearing over and over again that, you know, they're committed to figuring out, they're committed to making it work. One of our much beloved, you know, high school science teachers said to me yesterday, you know, she just wants to be with her kids and get in front of her kids and kind of begin that work. And so if we're able to pick up some momentum this week in the work that our teachers are doing, then not having a delay, so not closing as was one of the second option, I suppose. I think it may be an added benefit that we can carry that momentum of the work this week into the remote learning next week. So there won't be, there won't be a lag because, you know, we're not proposing to close or I'm not proposing to close. We also keep the calendar intact. So I see that as another benefit. And this is something I went back and forth about, you know, on one hand, it's only a week. But on the other hand, it's a week. And so in trying to weigh that out, I think we do have a calendar. It remains intact. I think from a teacher perspective, another significant benefit is that we give them the week to only focus on the remote learning part of the job we're asking them to do. And so they'll have all of their kids in front of them via Zoom. They'll be working through the remote tools. And they won't yet have to in real time navigate the hybrid classroom technology that we're asking them to pick up with the following Tuesday on the 8. And so I think I see that as a real benefit because it'll give them some time to focus on this piece of it. And then because I'm proposing that we run the shortened day schedule, teachers across the district would have the time in the afternoons, the additional time to continue to work out the logistics with setting up and effectively managing the hybrid classroom. And just to give you a taste of that, I was with, I mentioned before, I was with a group of middle school students, excuse me, middle school teachers earlier. And what they were trying to conceive of, if you can imagine for a second, we've got, you know, three screens in a room. So you've got your smart board screen, you've got your laptop screen, and then you've got a desktop computer screen. And what the teachers were trying to sort out was on one screen, they wanted to make sure they could see all of their kids who are at home and all other kids at home could see them. They also wanted to be able to interact with their smart board. So they had their smart notebook up on their laptop. And then we're trying to project it to the smart board where they would typically do their lessons. And so with the camera setup, the idea is the kids who are in person can engage in real time right there in the lesson that's interacting. And then the kids at home through the camera can see the lesson and the teacher can see the kids through that third screen. So for whatever reason, they were having real difficulty being able to use the interactive feature of the smart board, which as you know, our teachers really rely on. So it sounded like they came up with a workaround, but probably not an ideal workaround. And, you know, my strong takeaway from that experience was we need to give them as much time to figure out these things because while that was one snag, I'm sure there are others that as we get into this are going to emerge. And the only way we're going to know about them is as we get into this in practice. And so while they'll have certainly time this week to practice, whatever additional time we can shelter for them will serve our kids in the long run.
Kevin?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the time and just remembering the, the Schoology training that half our board needs to attend. So I'm just reminding you of time because I know I then I want to do a round robin with the board members.
I think it's repetitive, but the last kind of note I would hear is just that, you know, in addition to allowing them to focus only remotely, we also shelter that time in the afternoon so they can continue their planning and their preparation and their logistical, you know, sorting out of the hybrid classroom. So I'll just stop, I'll stop there. You have my recommendation. You've heard me speak to the benefits and the drawbacks. You've certainly yourselves understand the enormity of the task and the complexity of the environment, both within school and outside of school that all are coming together and influencing this recommendation tonight.
Okay, thank you. Because we are focused on a very, this one agenda item. And we are going to discuss other items on Thursday. I asked board members to remember that. There's certainly a lot to still discuss, but focusing on Kevin's recommendation, I'd like to go around and get a sense of questions if you need Kevin to clarify and a couple of comments about where you're coming from. Again, please just try to restrict it to just Kevin's recommendation. Thank you. I'm not sure.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So Kevin, if we did do remote next week, how confident are you that remote is going to work with all the Schoology issues that we're having? Me as a parent, I haven't had much confidence in the technology that we've been rolling out as far as the web training this morning for sixth graders, Schoology training. It doesn't seem like we're technologically there. So I'm just curious. We send our kids remote next week. They do half days. The teachers teach through Schoology. Is it going to work?
So we've had Schoology issues, Mandy, and I think they were surprising. It was, as I, I don't know if I said it here in another conversation, but trying to sort out, you know, whether it was local, the issue or national, I think at, at the kind of Schoology nationally dropped out. What I would say in direct answer to your question is, you know, all of our teachers always have a Plan A, a Plan B, a Plan C and a Plan D. And so what, you know, I would be suggesting to them is, you know, set up your Plan A. And if that involves Schoology and it doesn't work, then you go to your Plan B. What I'm imagining is that, as I talked about what those kind of orientation sessions are, it may not be a full reliance on Schoology and all of the features within Schoology that get us through next week. Rather, it'll probably be Zoom. And so doing a lot of the video conferencing through Zoom. And so I suspect, you know, if teachers, if there were issues with Zoom, then teachers would probably default to Google Meet, which many were using before the district adopted Zoom back in April or May of last spring. So.
Got it. But my last question is, but the teachers will be in the classrooms teaching remote to the students at home?
That's correct. But yeah, we would, the teachers would be at school.
Okay.
I, and I just want to clarify for everyone at home listening, the proposal is a full week of remote, but running the full week on a partial day schedule.
Short, the shortened day schedule, that's right. And the rationale for that part of the proposal is to carve out the afternoon hours so teachers can continue to do their work and their planning and their, their training and preparation.
And so with that, with the full, the half days next week and fully remote, is it a guarantee that the kids will be back in school on the 8th? In-person cohort A will be 8th and 9th, and then cohort B would be 10th and 11th? Or are we, how is that, how is the following week better?
So the following week would be cohort A would come Tuesday, the 8th. We would have Wednesday, the 9th would be a remote day for everybody. That's the day that, you know, we would clean the buildings and do all the disinfecting. And then cohort B would be here on the 10th and the 11th.
Okay.
Kevin, I'm not sure you're going to have an honest answer, not that it wouldn't give me an honest answer, but an actual answer. We've already delayed school this week to allow our teachers more time to get ready. I mean, how confident are you guys that if we do remote next week, that we're truly going to be ready on 8th? Like are fixes going to be fixed in a week?
Yeah, I, I think we can control what we can control. And I can, you know, I guess I don't have a clear answer for you because, you know, honestly, the, the earth shifts so fast in this environment. You know, here we are, the second week in a row, and I'm coming to you with a proposal to change, right? So I, I personally feel confident after the conversations I've had with our staff and seeing, you know, what they were up against a week ago and then how they came in so resolutely this week. And we're just nose to the grindstone, working things through. So I think if we can distill down to its essence, what we're going to be doing, which is, and you know, again, I don't want to oversimplify it or misspeak about what actually is going to happen. But what I'm imagining is teachers will be meeting their kids right through Zoom and they'll be doing all of those orientation activities. And that's a, you know, it's a relatively simple, kind of technologically simple exchange. And so we won't need necessarily to get to do that really fundamental piece of the work, all of those pieces fully in place. And so, you know, again, I think we always, there are, there are always glitches. I mean, there are always glitches in, in technology. And so I don't want to get hung up on, you know, that Zoom went down, the Schoology went down, because we have moments across a normal school year where Power School goes down or something else goes down. You know, I think, you know, for me, the the focus is allowing more time for them to practice as they get ready for that hybrid. In terms of the, you know, would we stay in remote or, you know, would we go to a hybrid next week? I think really what would shift that would be a change in the, the COVID data here in Wilton. I think, you know, we have a recognition that, you know, the tools we have, we have, people will be functional with them. And, you know, while we always grow into everything, I think we'll, we'll be able to manage, you know, effectively.
I would hope also that coupled with this, there'll be a recognition that this also gives our community a chance to kind of realign ourselves with the shared commitment to COVID mitigation strategies. And that coming out of, you know, the school also will be some, you know, policies that will then further that shared commitment. And I think that we should, you know, recognize that this, the time this week to not, to be prepared to move, to get ourselves prepared on the classroom front and on the health and safety front.
I, I actually have one more question. Or just a confirmation. There's, I think there were two items that you, that you had mentioned that are not going to be available to school, like the additional webcam that the teachers may need as well as the, the actual sneeze guards. But as far as opening in person next week, that's not an issue. The teachers are not uncomfortable about missing that since you have a, you know, since you've put in an additional sneeze guards that the administration or the, you have something in place of it until they're shipped in and the web cameras are extra.
And I think, but to be Gretchen, to be clear, and I also, I don't, look, I, I don't want people to misunderstand or misconstrue what I'm saying, right? My recommendation is, you know, rooted in, in the information I gathered this week. The health and safety concerns that our staff harbor, we have to pay attention to, right? Many of them, particularly our high school staff are saying very clearly, you've seen the communications to the board. They don't feel comfortable in the building and I don't know what number of plexiglass shields is going to change that. That is a legitimate concern that they have that's born of, you know, the way a school operates where you have, you know, even on, in a hybrid schedule, 600 kids and, you know, a couple hundred staff. That's what they're nervous about. And so we're doing our best to provide all these layered mitigation strategies. And so, but, you know, stretching out the time, creating some, some time now to allow them to get comfortable. Be in the building without kids and then, you know, phase the kids in. And then I think too, it's, you know, it's very fair to recognize just, you know, across the district, our own level of readiness. There is no, look, where everybody is, everybody is committed 150% to doing the best they can as much as they can as soon as. But we have to name honestly, the complexity of the environment that we're in.
Yeah, Kevin?
Glenn, go ahead.
I, I don't know. We're not ready. We're not ready from a variety of standpoints. We're not ready from a Schoology standpoint. We're not ready from a PPE standpoint. Getting everything in place. And as much as I hate to say it, I, I just don't know why we don't put it all, put opening off one more week to get, yeah, it, it just seems to be the, the right thing to do to me. And I, perhaps I'm wrong. I, I know we want to get the kids back in school. I understand that. I would opt to open, as I said earlier, remotely for the high school in Middlebrook, but certainly in person for middle, for Millard Driscoll and Sodder Mill. I would hold off totally on Schoology. Let, let's open with Google Classroom, which the teachers know, they're familiar with, it works, they're comfortable with it. Until they can get themselves. they can get themselves totally feeling, you know, great about using Schoology. It's complex. But this constant changing for so many of our parents is just a nightmare. And I understand we are dealing with moving targets. I, I get that. But we've got to get something nailed down that gets our parents, our children, the ability to plan, get things in place, et cetera. Anyway, my, that's my view. I, I would put off another whole week.
Okay. That's why I discarded that idea, because believe me, Debbie and I spoke about this at length a number of times. And, you know, as I went through my own machinations this morning about what my recommendation was going to be, I, let me tell you, I was thinking about this one. The only thing we gain is, you know, an empty school because if we're closed next week, we're extending out the school year, we're not bringing in our staff and paying them for their time. Those would be additional days that we would have to pay. We can't afford it, right? We're, you, we're spending money in lots of different ways. It is genuinely cost prohibitive. So the 12-month employees would be here and they would be doing their thing. We would be able to pay for additional time for some of our teachers, not, not in the way that you might be thinking about. So I, I really, I, I thought about that long and hard and I don't, I just don't see, to me, the, obviously it's my recommendation, but I think the better choice is the, is the remote learning. And, you know, if you heard kind of the description of what, what we're doing, for those folks who are, you know, really struggling with Schoology, Schoology isn't going to be necessarily mission critical for the work that needs to be done those first several days.
Okay. Where I'm looking at the clock, I want to thank all the board members for their comments. What I've heard is that there's concern about, you know, obviously the health and safety issues, which we as a board continually say are at the top of our list. To me, what resonates is that the local department of health director is supportive and recommending that we not do in-person learning until September 8th. I think that's obviously for a lot of different reasons. One are, one are the reports of behaviors that we have heard about, not only any single incident, but several. And adolescents are adolescents. But this, to me, would give some time to sort of literally clear the air. It's going to be at least 14 days until the kids actually come on campus so they can, people can rethink their behavior, can clean it up, can get better and all of those things. We also have to keep an eye on the number of cases in Wilton, while certainly no one is going to be alarmed by that if they were living in Alabama. Still for Wilton, it is a bit of an uptick. And we have to also kind of look over our shoulders a little bit at Danbury. Danbury numbers are concerning. So I personally am not opposed to the idea of holding off on bringing kids and teachers onto campus until September 8th. I do share everybody's concerns about will technology work enough next week so that we'll have a successful remote-only week starting August 31st. I need to trust Kevin and the staff and the principals to make it work. I don't know all kinds of Schoology, but it's not the only tool. There are other tools at teachers, teachers access, they can access. I think the critical point is that if kids get to see their teachers, interact with teachers, listen to their teachers, get to know their teachers and start the year off in a positive venue, even though it might be a remote venue, then that's a good thing. So delaying maybe does not solve anything. And the health issue, because we're not in person, is taken care of. So I, I personally think that Kevin and his staff has kind of made the, the best of the reality of, of what we're facing right now. It is required sacrifice on everyone's part and in particular, the families. The, the families have been amazing through all of this. And yet again, we're going to them and asking for further patience, for further understanding and further support. And I am hopeful that our teachers are truly appreciative of that and understand, you know, the stresses and strains on family as well as on themselves. And, and also the teachers feel appreciated that we want to make this work, that we want the tools to be there, we want the time to be there, we want the health and safety to be there. So I think there needs to be kind of recognition all around that every single one of us, everything, every single constituents is trying as best as they can and to try to make a situation that is not less than wonderful work for our kids. And so I'm going to trust Kevin's recommendation. So I will entertain a motion to, to adjust the Wilton Public Schools reopening plan to remote-only K-12 learning the week of August 31st till September 4th and then begin a hybrid K-12 opening beginning September 8th. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gretchen. I'm sorry, I need a motion. Will somebody make that?
You're right. No moved.
All right. Thank you, Gretchen. Will somebody second it?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Jen. Is there discussion, further discussion? All in favor, please?
Hey, Debbie.
I'm sorry, yes.
Are we allowed to say why we're voting one way versus another?
Of course, this is discussion. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
I feel like the main thing here for me is that school-wise, we're not ready. I think that's, for me, that seems to be the bigger focus is that our teachers are not confident with the Schoology's not working and whatnot, that it, that this isn't really a health issue because of what our kids have been doing. It's really that we're just not ready. And I, if that's the way that I'm going to vote, then that's what I want people to understand that. And that's, I truly hope that, you know, that means if we're remote next week, that, you know, our teachers are doing their best, whether it's through Google Classroom, whatever they need to do to get online with our kids and acclimate them to this year and introduce, make introductions or whatever. But that, that's where the focus of next week should be, not on anything else that's been going on, that it's, we as a Wilton Public School are not ready to start in person on Monday. And then I truly hope that come the following week, that we are moving forward and that we will be in person and ready.
Okay. I think everybody shares that. All right, Glenn, thank you. Any other, other, any other discussion?
Deb, the only thing I'm going to say is that we're hearing our teachers loud and clear and we're supporting our teachers.
Yeah, right. And I, I think we're trying to support everybody, but yes, absolutely. I want the teachers to hear support and all of that. And I also want parents to hear, you know, thank you and appreciate, and we appreciate the, the patience and the support.
Yeah.
Discussions, Gretchen?
Well, I just think that it is more important for everyone to understand that it is, you know, as, as Jen said, it's, it's not just the health of everyone, which it is a factor, but the comfort level of the teachers, I think, is very important. And I think that's, that's really a lot of why I'm voting.
Right. Okay, good. All right. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that was unanimous. So thank you. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Kevin, for, you know, preparing, you know, all that recommendation with such detail. We really appreciate it. And I appreciate the over 1,000 people that apparently have been on listening. So again, that's just a, a marker of how involved and supportive our community is and how attentive our teachers are. So thank you. We will be meeting Thursday. There are lots of important issues to talk about. One is we need to start promulgating policies that will support our expectations in terms of behaviors. Another is we need to discuss athletics and the, the CAC and the local kind of plans and, and hear from Kevin and probably Chris McDougall as to what those are and what that means. And I know I'm leaving out some, but those are the, the two hot topics that I remember off the top of my head and I know there are more. So anyway, point being, there's a regular meeting on Thursday. It will probably be by Zoom. If it can be in person, that's fine, but right now I think the staff needs to concentrate on other things besides helping us get a space ready. All right, comments from the public? Lucille?
Deb, one more thing, we're just, we will send an email out tonight, correct?
Can you finish?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
I think as soon as we get this off, I'm putting my mask on, I'm going over to Kevin's office and Lucille and we'll get, you know, I know they'll get something out, but that's a great point. We, for the, the few people, I don't mean few, but I mean, the people that weren't on this 1,000-person call will absolutely get messages to them. All right, Lucille, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Were there more comments from the public?
Yeah, I have three more to read.
Okay.
Okay, the first one is from Marie Demossi. "To whom it may concern, I understand my choices and that I can choose fully remote, but hybrid was the best option for my children. With this said, watching the actions of some parents in the community that have no regard for others, especially our teachers who are bravely supporting our children in person as well as trusting parents to make good choices. This is frightening to me to risk our teachers and children who will carry this to others. If I am not seeing my parents who are high-risk so that children can go to school, I need to know that my children are safe. All promises for everyone's safety fulfilled and teachers feel supported, safe and moral boosted. Why the rush, risk? Let's start remotely safely like surrounding schools. There needs to be consequences for those who do not comply to keep our community safe." Thank you. The next one is from John Priest. "My name is John Priest, 19 Fairview Lane, Wilton. For the last 27 years, this time of the year has always been an exciting one for me as I prepare to return to school and meet my students. Despite all the changes and obstacles of this year's reopening, I find myself eager to begin but worried about the recent community events that bring us together tonight. I am concerned about the students involved in the gatherings that are being discussed. I am concerned about making decisions that are not based on community health data. Several weeks ago, a plan was unveiled that established certain criteria that would be needed for quarantining cohorts and closing of schools. It is my hope that the Board of Ed does not stray off that plan due to the news of the gathering. I understand how upsetting this public outing was to many people. I was concerned too. I do not know all the students involved in the gatherings, but I know many. I would bet that most have reached out to administration in some way and have already started offering apologies and solutions. As the Board discusses these difficult decisions, I would ask that you consider the thousands of students who have not been together in school for almost six months, most of which are eager to return. Health and safety are most important, so I ask you to please make sure whatever action is taken does so with consideration for the criteria you have previously established for infection rates and not pressure from an understandably concerned public. Thank you for all of your time and effort." And the next one is from Rhonda Lanzey, 250 Linden Tree Road. "There has been no training given to substitute teachers for Wilton schools regarding safety protocols or any new software being used such as Schoology. What are the Wilton VLS plans in this regard?" And that would be it.
Okay, thank you very much. We finished our agenda, so we are adjourning the special meeting at 6:06. So thank you, everybody. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.